Okay.
Oh, don't install it. Oh, no, no.
No.
Good. Why not? Why?
It's usually pretty quick. I don't know what to tell you. Let it go. Just let it update.
Yeah, I don't have any choice.
You'll have a few minutes. Yeah. Yeah. At least you have time.
I'll take that. Page.
Just give it to me, to me after you do the initial thing, because that's all it is. It's just the resolution. Because that's what I'm going to take my notes on. Does he know? Right, does he know? Nope. He's not going to be here tonight, that's why we're doing this.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the social coalition meeting to order. Everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, can you call the roll?
Certainly. Counselperson Bear?
Here.
Dupre?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Salcedo?
Here.
Zor?
Here.
To, uh, Nichols?
Here.
And Mayor Tobin?
Here. Okay, so my computer decided to update before we started, so I'm kind of on the blind side here. But we're going to open this meeting. Where would we like to start? Like to start?
I'm Reverend Kara Hildebrandt, the pastor at Lincoln Park Presbyterian Church, and I'm also a member of the Economic Development Corporation for the city of Lincoln Park. So, this organization of the Social Development Coalition started when Matt Koppeler was here as city manager, and he came to me and said, hey, I'm going over to the Lafayette Resource Room. Do you know anything about them? And I said, absolutely not. He said, go with me. So, we went and we found out all of the services they provided, which neither of us had any idea that they provide so many services to the community. And Matt and I started talking about this realization that there are services, amazing services, in the city of Lincoln Park. And on the other side, there are residents who need those services, but they are not aware of each other. And so, how do we begin to bring together those two entities so that the people who need services can have them and the people who provide services can meet those needs? So, we began the development. At that point, he started to transition out of the city of Lincoln Park as he moved on to to other things. But we got a group together, Larry Kelsey, who was on city council at the time, Lillian, you were part of it, Maureen, you were there at the beginning, as well as individuals like the behavioral specialist team from the Lincoln Park school system. We also had Tom Carnes, who was mayor at the time. We had all of these individuals coming together, and what we were discussing is what can we do? And we wanted to have a community forum where we got all the service providers in the room. And we did that in January of 2020. We got all the service providers. Granted, we had no idea COVID was about to happen, but what was great about that was we had like 100 people, and it was everybody. It was the civic organizations, it was, we had city council members, we had school board members, we had faculty from the, these schools, and then we had all of these amazing discussions realizing all of these services. So, we had the service providers realizing there were more service providers in the city. Also at that meeting, we found out that Reverend Paula Miller and her church were starting a resource guide of bringing together all of those service providers that was easy to obtain. And so, the discussion became, how can we get this information out? How can we be present for the Lincoln Park citizens and getting them the providers that they need? And one of the things I remember, Lillian, you said, there will be people who will ask you as a resident for, they need help in some way, and you have no knowledge of where to send them. Like, you try to stay on top of it, but there are so many things, right? And so, what would it mean to be able to resource the city council of saying, here are all the resources, so that when somebody in the city asks? So, at that point, as we're building, we're looking at, all right, how do we become part of the structure? And from the earliest stages, as Leah, who was the city planner of the time, was helping us, she was interested in how do we get the services to the residents of, well, what if we set it up a little bit like the Economic Development Corporation? Because we understand that, right? The Economic Development Corporation, we have a set of rules that we go by, and we can advise the city council, but we can't actually tell you guys anything, right? I mean, we can say it, but you don't have to go with it. There's nothing that we do that's legally binding in that way. So, we started to think of it, all right, how do we do that, but with social development? And so, that's where you got the economic development and the social development part. And so, through conversations, and then Mike Higgins comes in as mayor, and so, we're working together of, well, what does this look like? And so, that's when the discussion became, well, is it part of the CDBG? How does this begin to look in the city? And so, it kind of had transitioned and transformed from the feedback we were getting from you all, and then we had the study session last year. And that study session, again, brought together, we had done the 38 pages of all of the needs assessment that we had been able to do with the city by working with the different social workers that Paula has been able to get as interns of looking at, all right, how can we be the best benefit to the city? Because all of this has been about is, how do we better the lives of our residents? Who in here doesn't want the lives of their residents better, right? That's all we ever want. And so, how do we come together and communicate in such a way that it actually streamlines the communication? It makes it more effective. And so, that is the history of where we are coming, and I know someone else has the next part.
Hello, I'm Belde Garza, and I think I mentioned this the last time I was here. Looking over at your master plan that was done in 2019, and I believe that the master plan is done every five years, which is 2025, 24, 25, I hope you're thinking about doing another master plan. When you talk about the community engagement segment that, that they did, when they did the master plan, a lot of the things that are on here is we're already doing with the coalition, you know? Where, you know, we did, you know, the, the guide that was put out, the forums that we've had, so we're already contributing to that, and we want to do it, you know, want to contribute some more. Like my colleague said, you know, we just want to make sure that the residents of Lincoln Park are getting all the resources they need. Lincoln Park is very different than it was five years ago, especially with the Hispanic community coming into play. So, I just, I'm excited about that you have this on the agenda, and I'd like to hear, you know, what your expectations are of the, of the coalition.
Thank you.
One of the things that, oh, Paula Miller, Pastor St. Michael and All Angels Episcopal Church, a member of the Social Development Coalition since January of 2020. So, I came in a little later to the game. One thing that Belde pointed out to me that I did not know, in that five-year plan, there, there was a community needs assessment done, and it states in that that there were 200 surveys returned. And I wanted to let you know that our Social Development Coalition did at least that well. And we didn't, you didn't pay us anything to do that. So, we already have done some work that I think can help in what you are looking for, support for planning for five years ahead. The other thing that I thought maybe I ought to bring up is that the bylaws that we have passed out that are on, on your counter, we weren't sure how we fit. We've been asking for help from you because we are not government people. And, and so, we tried to put together bylaws that would make sense. And so, you will see a mission statement, you'll see our purpose, you'll see some of our values, as well as our goals, some of our organizational structure that we, we hope to follow. And so, we want you to understand that we are not fly-by-night. We have been going since
2018.
A long time. And I, I asked my dear friend who's a social worker, who's been overseeing the interns, because they have to have someone, you know, give the okay back to Wayne State that they have actually completed the tasks. And I said, um, so what are we getting into here? And she said, it's a lot of work, and it's very slow. So, we knew that this was not going to come to fruition in seven years, but we're so much further now than we ever expected to be. And so, we come to you tonight so that you can see that we have been working diligently, we have achieved two community forums, we have updated the resource guide, it's in English and Spanish, we had incredible feedback from the community forum encouraging us to even expand the resource guide even further. And I was, I was so pleased to hear all of the feedback we got because it just showed me how proud all of the individuals are of the things that are available in this city. We could put a catalog together that would be overwhelming, but we wanted to keep the resources that the people are, you know, really in need of, close to your hearts and to our hearts, so that you can, so that we can, we can source you and, and have that available. So, we come tonight just thanking you for your open ears and your open heart, and ask, how can we work together? What questions do you have of us of where and how we should go next?
The chair?
Yes.
Are you speaking? Are we able to ask questions now?
Sure.
Absolutely. Paula and Kara, I, I know that you guys were big on pushing this and creating it, and it's really grown. I'm interested in hearing about what you see yourselves doing with us directly for the residents.
For the, for the residents or with the city council?
With, with, for the residents, with the city.
Okay, so, we see this as being an important part of the city structure somehow, whatever you want to call it to make it fit, that's perfectly fine. But if it being of an advisory sense of us keeping you up to date, whether or not you want a report for every city council meeting or every other city council meeting of, hey, you should be aware of these service providers, these are the things, and here are the needs in the city, of just keeping that kind of in front. Because I know, right, you get so busy with other things that even though you, you two, you all are here because you care deeply about the city and deeply about the residents of this city, right? That's why you are sitting here, that there are times where things get kind of shoved off to the side, and so, we just kind of keep, hope to keep it like presented. And so, whether or not you want it in newsletter form, you want it in email form, like, we're willing to work with that. And then with the interns that we keep getting from the, the social work school of Wayne State, they have been able to help us in solidifying and paying attention to certain things, because they are working in macro social work instead of the micro, which is really kind of a neat thing for us to be able to partner with, is to gain their knowledge and their assessment. Again, as Paula said, I mean, this has cost no money for anybody. Like, this has all been, we are doing this with nothing and don't need anything to do this. This is just about being good-hearted to make sure everybody has the information they need at their hands, so that when you get the resident who asks the question of, I have this need, you go, I know exactly where you need to go and what you need to do. And even to have that information here inside City Hall, because people walk into City Hall to pay something, but they have another need, and everybody's like, well, we don't know, we don't deal with that here. Well, now, we can give you the information, have that easily accessible so that you do, so that you can answer their questions. Yeah.
So, they come into City Hall, and they have this need, so where are they going to find this in City Hall? I mean, is a department, you want to, you want to go through the CDBG for them to find this? The CDBG already has their own work, and where is the budget coming to give this, them, this information to take with them? Where are the costs for that going to come from? Where is the staff from this department that is already overtaxed? How are they going to make room in their schedule to do this work? I mean, this is, this is, they're already very, very busy, and it's a federally funded program, excuse me, federally funded program. These resources are, a lot of them are already federally funded, and the information is already out there, and basically, they would be referred back to the churches or to 211, Wayne Metro, DHS. So, these things are already there, so there's nothing that we here are really going to do other than what's already being done. We can't give them more than what's out there. So, how do you suggest we do more than what's already out there? We don't have more to give than what's in the resource book now, other than that information.
Right, but you are armed with the resource guide. So, that's part of it, is just making sure you guys are armed with the resource guide to respond.
We have been, so I, I'm kind of trying to understand what more it is you want us to do. We are, it's on the website. You know, I, I just know that our departments are, are, we're always low, our staff is low. We don't have this abundance of staff, abundance of time. I don't, I don't want to put more on our people, and I don't want to say, no, we're not going to help, and we don't want to help. I just want to say that the, you know, these resources are already here, and they're, they're, we're going to be sending them out to the resources that are already out in abundance to where they can get them, so we can send them there, but can we do much more than what's, what this is? That's, that's what my concern is, is that we're just going to be giving them the same thing that they are going to get somewhere else.
Tom Carnes, Lincoln Park Chamber of Commerce, President. These people work so hard at this, but I think we need to bring it back down to just base tax here. What they can do is provide to you on a regular basis what they think are the needs that are developing the community, what the problems are. If done properly, they, this group could form a place where they would have public meetings just to hear what the problems are going on, whether it be in the immigrant community, whether it be anything that's happening. There's so many different individuals in our town that have individual problems that it only might apply to, to one or two, and they're lost because they don't, some don't speak the language, some don't have the friends, they don't have knowledge of how government works. What I think this group is trying to do is to provide the correlation between government and the community, that they can be a resource to you by listening to what the public has to say when they're not limited to a minute or two, or have the fear of being able to talk in front of public here, that they could take that information that the citizens are reporting, that the problems that they have, to you, and maybe you can do the, and correct it, or let you know what is, is happening there, or just by answering their questions at, at the forum. I don't think that they need to have an office or to spend any money whatsoever. I think that they are only asking to have a voice, to be able to come
Liaison, but they'll need to have somebody to direct them to, and that's what I'm asking.
I would, I would, I would sincerely recommend that you would assign a liaison to them.
Well, that's what I'm discussing here. What are your plans?
Well, just to establish a liaison to them so that they can, they can be knowledgeable of it, and if they have something that they want to bring up, that they would go through that, that liaison and go through. All these people are trying to do is help the community, help themselves to make Lincoln Park a better place to live.
That's what we want to do too, but we need more understanding, and we are all so aware of resources that, you know, we've, we've all worked with this, I've been with this group, you, we've been with this group, we've all tried to help wherever we can and get worded out to everything. We're just kind of at a loss to know, you know, what exactly more you want us to do. We've got the book out on the website. I'm just kind of, is that what, that we're not supporting you? We want to support you, but we're just unsure of how far you want us to be involved in this. We, you know, we can't be another commission to do this because these are federally funded programs which don't fall under something that we can do. We can't do state-funded programs because we are not federal, we are not state, we are a local municipality, you know, and
Well, I would think, not to, I didn't mean to, but, well, that's, that's who I am. I think that they just want a voice. If they would schedule a, every three months to, to a meeting, give them their, the time that you would allot, any 15, 20 minutes to present what has been brought to them over the course of it. They don't need to have, hook up with any, it is CDBG or a CIC or any other commission, they are their own. And what I want to bring to your attention here too is that you guys have the opportunity to do something great. This is not something that other communities have, it's something that could be unique to Lincoln Park, and you guys could be the forefront, you could be the leaders that bring this to the community, because it is all about taking care of the citizens. So, in talking to my son today, who was a manager, he says, good managers find a way to say yes. So, that's what we're looking for. We don't want to take your money, we don't want, we just want to get the word out to help the people that need the help.
To, to, to the chair, I've been on the committee and obviously, you know, support this, I would, I would be more than willing to take on the liaison position on top of the other liaison positions that I have. I, I've asked if we, as a city, if we're allowed to form like advisory committees, and we've never really, I've never really gotten a firm answer on that. It's like Tom said, we, we don't need a commission, we don't need a department head, but we do have a resource guide, but that resource guide needs, needs maintenance and needs updating. You know, it could be expanded, it could become better. We could become, you know, we could do other community events to help bring residents and connect them with service providers. I don't, I don't think anyone would say that you, that you can ever have too much outreach as far as, you know, as far as that goes. I mean, I love the website, I love how the resource guide is much easier to access now. And yeah, that's, that's kind of where I'm at, and
Thank you. It's okay.
Mr. Higgins?
Thank you. I'm Mike Higgins, I'm former mayor. I'm also a member of the coalition, and a couple of things I'd like to point out, where the EDC and the DDA work very hard to try to work on our economy in Lincoln Park, but to have a good economy, you also have the good social skills as well. And if you look around Lincoln Park and you know, and everyone up there knows, that Lincoln Park has now slipped under the 50% mark on income, which when first time a business comes to Lincoln Park and who has thought to come to Lincoln Park, the first question they ask is, what's the mid-income for Lincoln Park? And when you tell them, they say, well, it was nice meeting you, goodbye. And that is why we don't get big-name stores, we don't get any of that. It also shows a very well need for this kind of thing. And I, the other thing, the other two things I wanted to come up here, and Councilman Jason already spoke to that, that this committee could continue going and updating what we've already done. And I'd like to point out that where the city put together a questionnaire out and asking what the citizens needed, and our group put out at the same kind of questionnaire, and we got easily four times as many answers than the city did, because we took the time to do it, because we had the volunteers to do it, because we have the group to do it. And the other thing that I wanted to bring up, and I want to make very, very clear, where our, two of our leaders are reverends, and we want to thank them for all that they do do for us. But I also want to point out, because there was a misconception with some of the council people that I spoke to, this is not a religious group. This is a group of senior, of citizens who are concerned about what's happening in Lincoln Park and the best way to move forward. Thank you.
Hello, coming back to the master plan, I read this master plan thoroughly, and there was a lot of recommendations in this master plan in different areas. Has there been a report that indicates whether these recommendations have been implemented? No?
We don't know which recommendations you are referring
Okay, let me, let me give you one. Okay, let me give you one. It indicates that the communication for the, with the Hispanic community, that the recommendation was to develop a strong liaison with the Hispanic community and/or hire a bilingual staff.
Yes, through our CDBG, we've, we've been working on that, and we have been working to, you want to answer this?
Well, I was just going to say, we also have a service that we utilize for residents who can't speak English, so if, if our internal staff isn't available to assist them, we do have resources that we can reach out to.
Working with the Hispanic community forever, you know, they don't feel very comfortable with that. They really want to have somebody that actually speaks Spanish and speaks their language. Thank you.
Again, thank you for all that you are doing to consider the Social Development Coalition, and I wanted to let you know that there are people and organizations that support our work. You have heard names of those right within your own council and, and mayor, but we have those here with us tonight. those here with us tonight, as well as a list of all of those that we have been able, just quickly, to put together for you, to let you know that it's just not a small group who are supporters of the Social Development Coalition. We have a large following, and that, I think it makes a difference, that we are supported by you, by the folks who are here, and by numerous people who are here. Including, if I can just tell you a quick story, when we brought this up at the last meeting, someone was watching on the live stream, and they actually emailed our Social Development Coalition email, saying, I saw what you're talking about, I support you wholeheartedly, I would like to work with you. And that was one individual. We haven't heard from the rest. I'm sure there are more out there who support us. I thank you, and ask you for your support.
With that, no one else wishing to speak, I'm going to close this study session at 6:59.